I got another board meeting going on at the same time as this one. I gotta stream it. The town.
I saw your name in the paper.
Huh?
Saw your name in the paper. They were thanking you. I reviewed last week. Front page.
It was?
Michael Marizio says we can have... Thank you, Michael, but we should be having all...
Oh, John Karp said it. Yes. Yep. Which one?
What is he doing?
Dale? He's not doing anything.
I'm working... I have the signs for the community in my front yard. Christopher. How are you? So are we on because of the new math program mainly? Because you were on last year. It's like you're very important. We gotta come. I said it's mainly because of the new program, right? 8th grade program?
Same ones. We're just talking about math.
I asked them to get you last year.
Right.
But you start this... You know what? Piloting. You're piloting or not?
We're gonna start in 8th grade this year.
Okay.
It's kind of on hold. Teachers get some feet on the ground with the remote.
You know what? I was gonna ask you that question. And we have to ask that question.
Because it's...
Have to ask you. I says, oh, my God, there's no way I could pilot.
In future?
Okay.
Future?
I read your presentation, but I saw the piloting. And I remember you talked about... And I said, I gotta ask them how it's going because the kids are only there one day.
Yeah. Our goal is January.
So you knew that was me that yelled over?
After you said math, at first I'm like, who's this crazy guy yelling at? As I'm walking out of the building, he's beeping, hawking his horn, yelling at me.
It's always him. You just gotta assume it's him.
And then when you said math, I was like, oh, we have three.
And you passed because I stopped. Oh, I stopped to put some political signs up. And I said, white car? Was it a white car?
No, I have a black car.
But I knew it was going by.
Yeah. Yep. Nope. Yeah, I was leaving Alan to come back here.
I've been walking now... I walk the track at night. All right, now it's afternoon. It's like, I mean, the kids are gone, I'm walking. But some nights I walk all the way to Kenny's and around.
Oh, okay. Well, they put the sidewalks there.
Yeah, it's awesome. But now it's like, I used to go at 7:00 o'clock. Now it's pitch lane.
I know, right? Tell me about it. We're playing tennis right now and trying to finish matches.
How's that going? Good?
Our first match is tomorrow, so we'll see.
So far, we haven't heard anything from sports. You know, that was what I thought we would hear. Somebody catch... I didn't hear any school. You know, they've had soccer. They've had field hockey.
Right. I have to admit, my girls for tennis, they're... Because I said, you know, when you guys are on the opposite side of the court, it's not near anyone. You can pull it down. And they still play with it on. I'm amazed by that. I'm like, I can't even talk with it on. So... No, they've been doing really good with the...
Right.
Drama bomb.
I gotta turn on my computer.
Why is the big crowd tonight? This is double what we have.
Why? You know, isn't it?
The big crowd tonight. Damn, this is double the crowd that we usually have. Vibrate.
Guys, keep talking. Not starting on time. My computer's not even close.
What'd you sign? Oh, yes. Yes, yes, yes. No. No. Thank you.
Welcome. Totally.
I have my agenda, everybody set? Hey, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Observe a moment of silence for the following. Russ Hewitt, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Okay, our first presentation today is instructional... Already.
So thank you for having us this evening. We're very eager to talk to you about a few highlights with technology. And if you're watching at home, if you would click on the link to follow along with our presentation, we're gonna go over a few of the platforms and tools that we're using in the district. My name's Shannon Knapp, and I'm currently the Instructional Coach for Educational Technology at CNS Gillette Road and NSEEP.
And I'm Chris May. I currently serve Allen Road, Bear Road, Cicero, Lake Shore Road, and Smith Road.
And I'm Danielle Barrett. I currently service the junior high, Rox Middle and Rox L. And that's what we look like without our masks on.
Chris is the only one that wore the same color shirt. That was pretty weird.
So today, we want to talk to you a little bit about what we do and our role as tech coaches. We like to consider ourselves as people who coach for capacity. We like to provide that same personalized learning experience for all of our staff members and teachers as what we expect them to provide to their students. And I try to think of a little kid learning to tie their shoe and a parent who is getting extremely frustrated as they're trying to learn and a kiddo who's getting frustrated because they can't learn it on the first try. It's very easy for a parent to take the shoe, tie it for them, and move on with life. But in this role, we like to build that capacity for students to be able to gain the learning and the knowledge that they need to be prepared for life. So as coaches, we are so happy to be able to coach individual staff members in the district, whether it's virtually or in person, teams of teachers, grade levels, and departments. And we also provide resources for parents and students on a website. And we provide weekly tips and tricks to our staff members in response to frequently asked questions or updates in technology that need to be informed to our staff members.
So you all remember March. Before March, probably in February at some point, we conceptualized what our summer work would entail. And we had the idea of really focusing on instructional design, quality instructional design. In fact, we gave it the name DIDU, Digital Instructional Design University. Little did we know, we would really be putting technology at the forefront of everybody's education. With 20 sessions that we offered over the summer, we filled over 600 seats. We tried to model our instruction after what we expect teachers to do with their students. You know, our emphasis was, we're showing you and trying to model quality instruction so that you can then go and do that with your own students. All the sessions we did offer this summer live live on our website for teachers to go back to and refer to anything that they may want to review.
So when we started looking at the framework that we'd like to share with teachers for integrating technology, we used to use a kindler-gentler framework called SAMR. And we used to show a picture of a swimming pool, and we'd say, it's okay to just dip your toes in the water, and we're gonna bring you floaties, and this is, you know, you're gonna try this. And then, as Chris said, March came along, and we all got shoved off the diving board into the deep end. And we found this in this tech integration framework called Pickrat that really resonated with us. And in the lower-left part of Pickrat, it talks about passive replacement. And that's kind of where a lot of our people were at at the beginning of this, that they took things that they had done on paper or in the classroom, and they just replaced it with technology because we had no choice. But this coaching for capacity, the idea is that we moved people up to that creative, transformative corner. That doesn't mean every part of every lesson is there, but it means that our staff has the skill to have the students creating and to really transform the learning. So we really like this Pickrat model for that.
So I'm gonna read this quote that might be difficult to see. It says, "Don't use technology in your classroom because it is a buzzword or a trend. Use it because connecting your students with the world will prepare them for the future." So technology, in some cases, used to be a buzzword, and now it's a necessity. It's part of everyday life in the schools for sure, whether they're remote learners or hybrid learners at this point. And the more we can learn about technology and how it can help us, the better it will help us deal with all the unknowns that we've certainly been faced with and we continue to face every day, every week. You know, we're trying to prepare students for jobs that don't even exist at this point. And technology is gonna be a big part of that future.
So technology is certainly at the forefront of education, and I'm sure on your minds all the time right now. We were already concerned about and working toward developing 21st century skills for our learners. But with the pandemic shifting us to a fully virtual model and now to a hybrid model, it's become really important. EdLaw 2D is happening at the same time. We're concerned about staff and students knowing more about data privacy and choosing programs and platforms that protect our students' data. We're very excited about the computer science and digital fluency standards that are coming. We're in the awareness phase of those standards now, but in a few years, computational thinking, media fluency, digital citizenship are going to be expected in every classroom, every day. So we know that we need to do more, but we are kind of excited about this opportunity to have technology in the forefront of everyone's minds right now.
And in this technology world, our process is forever changing. Nothing stays the same. There's been so many things that we've developed. We go to bed, the next morning, we go to deliver it, and there's been an update. And go figure, we have to learn... We have to be on this learning train, which is moving very fast and getting faster every day. And a lot of our staff members here in the district have dedicated a lot of their time to learn the tools necessary to be able to engage all of our students in multiple settings. We want to give kudos to the tech department and the tech TAs for making all this possible with all the behind-the-scenes work that go into keeping us afloat and flexible thinking that everyone here has adopted in order to respond to the changes that are necessary to stay on board with the most current tech available to students.
So we'll get to a little more of the fun stuff. We're gonna talk about some specific tools and things you may see in the classroom. The first one is ClassLink, and it is our single sign-on solution. So what does that mean? You know, we know when we first entered March, people were using what we call different platforms, and parents were trying to... We were trying to make it easier for parents to get their students logged in, find information in one place or as few places as possible. Our tech department worked most of the summer on getting ClassLink available. So what it is, is you log into a device with your school account for staff and students. It enters into ClassLink. They log into ClassLink, and what opens are all the icons for the software and available resources that the district has vetted and approved. So you sign in once, you click on those icons, and it automatically, after the first time, logs students into those. So what an easier way for parents to help their students get access to those resources as well.
Obviously, the video conferencing platforms have been incredibly important. We have both Zoom and Google Meet available to staff and students. These platforms promote relationship building. They provide an opportunity for live teaching with the whole class or with small groups or individuals. A lot of our teachers are using Zoom or Meet to record their lesson and then provide that for students to watch either again or at another time. And this platform is also being used for office hours. So they're providing small group or individual help for students who need to ask a question of the teacher during office hours. We use the platform quite often to do tech troubleshooting and to see the person's screen so that we can walk them through. And I was saying to someone earlier, for coaching, this has really been an advantage because we can't touch their computer. They have to do the work themselves. So they really are learning the workflow.
And I'm assuming that a lot of you have heard of Google Classroom? It is... It is a consistent platform that several of our staff members are using to communicate with their students, assign materials, share materials, make announcements, and communicate with families. And I want to back up a little bit to March of 2020, before we shut down, and let you know that we had about 600 active Google classrooms. Then when we went fully remote in March, that number climbed to 1,775 active Google classrooms. And after checking this past week what our number's at, we are at 2,239 Google classrooms. So that number has grown exponentially in the past seven months. And we are so happy about Screencastify being available to all staff and students. This allows staff and students to easily create videos or screencasts where they can pre-record lessons or mini lessons, provide tutorials. And within Screencastify, there's another portion of it called Screencastify Submit, where a staff member might offer a prompt, and the student, by the click of a button, can offer a response or even voiceover a presentation.
We've expanded our text help solutions, and I'm sure you've heard from the Special Education Department how beneficial that's been. It's a tool that we have for all staff and students, so it's a universal approach. Everyone has it available to them. But it's an accessibility and testing solution. The Purple Puzzle piece can read text from websites, documents. Students can speak to type. The PDF reader has been incredibly popular since we've been out because it allows teachers to use materials that they have on paper or PDF files, and students can annotate them, can type on them, so they still can use some of the materials that they've spent so much time preparing. Screenshot Reader, all of these tools have just gotten better and better, and they've made it easier for students with disabilities to access printed material.
I can't say enough about the next one. It is Seesaw. This is an online digital portfolio. It allows teachers to share lessons pre-created or created on their own with students, but it really allows students to capture and create their own learning. There's an easy family connection. Teachers can allow families to sign in and see only their students' work when it's approved by the teacher, so it's a great school-to-home connection. So what does this one look like in practice? Well, think of a pre-K student or a kindergarten student that's coming into school. They may not know all their letters. They have a difficult time even logging into their accounts. When you are doing an activity, a student now, even as young as four or five years old, can take a picture of the activity, hit a microphone, and record their voice explaining their thinking. They can practice their short letter sounds. We even had some junior high and high school teachers say that this would be a great tool for foreign language. Art teachers using it for students to present a museum walk of their work. So it's a lot of fun. The kids love it. And teachers are telling me that students who are apprehensive about showing work on paper or in other ways or speak in front of a class love getting into this and really explaining their thinking. It's been a great tool for teachers to use. And we could go on about different tools. We're trying to limit this, but one of the last ones is EdPuzzle. So EdPuzzle allows teachers to create interactive video lessons. So they can draw videos from their own Screencastify pre-made videos from YouTube, Khan Academy. And EdPuzzle offers their own high-quality library of videos. And teachers can turn these videos into assessments where a student is watching a segment of a video, and all of a sudden, a question will pop up. They have to answer that question before the video moves on, and teachers can collect that data. So it's a really great way for online assessments for these teachers.
So that was a really quick look at a lot of tools, but those are... That is just touching the surface of what staff and students are using. But really, what we wanted to talk about was, in the future-ready framework, at the center of all of this is that idea of personalized student learning. And we really want to provide, as Danielle said, for our teachers that same personalized learning and model that so they can then create that atmosphere for their students. Obviously, curriculum, instruction, and assessment are the heart of it. All of these pieces go into it, and if you look at that future-ready framework, it's a continuous cycle of improvement. It's implementing these things, you know, assessing our use of them, refining it, and then starting all over again. So we're really grateful to have this time to share these with you. We would love for you to have the opportunity to actually participate with some of these tools, if you ever wanted that opportunity. And we're just very grateful for the time today.
And I know we're short, but I would like to add, I know we talked about the tech department and the support they have given and really the troubleshooting and the amount of work it's taken, but certainly our directors supporting what the staff needs. And I gotta tell you, the amount of effort the teachers have put into learning what they know now compared to what they knew even six or seven months ago, you know, a lot of credit goes out to them for really pushing themselves to learn these tools.
Do you have any questions for us?
A few, of course. Staff development. You mentioned staff development. So what is happening now? You did a lot over the summer, but what kind of staff development have you developed during the year?
We did just...
So if I'm a teacher and I'm looking to do something in Seesaw, and I would go to staff development, when do I do it and so forth?
So we did just survey the buildings, and we are developing some tool-specific professional development. We also, with our website, are encouraging people to pursue the badges and the certifications for these tools. Each of them have their own kind of certification. The other thing that we do with the coaching, it really does allow us to get in with either a department, a grade level, or a team, or even an individual, and plan with them and plan how they could best use these tools. And that kind of learning really goes best. I mean, they really learn how to...
Basically, individual. Like, I would contact you through the website, and you would come to my classroom and so forth. Okay? Thank you.
I just wanna... I just have a couple comments. We've all been through so much since the beginning of the year, our educators, our students, our administrators, and have worked so hard. But how exciting is this 21st century learning? You know, all these new tools are very exciting, and yes, there's a learning curve and, you know, have to find ways to implement them in their teaching plans, but it's very exciting to me. Thank you for your presentation. It was amazing.
Thank you.
I'm assuming you got to provide a lot of support going into this new year, considering this is so different than last fall. Are you able to get to where you need to get? Or... That's a weird question, I know. I just...
Go ahead.
I'm sure there's a high level of need right now.
It's interesting because our Wednesdays, I mean, I think we start in the morning and we get in our cars and say, what just happened? Because that's the day where everyone's saying, can you come and join our department? Can you come and coach our grade level? Now, on the other days, it's more individual because it's during a planning time, but that Wednesday is the time for team meetings, grade levels, and really, that is when people are trying to do some more deep learning that they can't get to during the week while they're teaching.
Is that why your Bitmoji doesn't smile as much?
That's a little nervous, hasn't she? I would say our demand is very high, but so is the demand on our staff, and we recognize that. So we want to be there as much as we can to support them. So it really... It's an effort from the whole district to get this to happen, and credit goes out to everybody.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, it looks like when the smoke clears, if it ever does, that this just kind of kicked us up a level to where we wanted to get anyway and forced us to get there faster. I mean, I don't think anything, in my opinion, you know, there's still very high value to in-person learning, but this will be a great tool to, you know, to supplement that down the road, and who knows where it'll go. But certainly, we've had to rise to the occasion, and thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
All right, we'll move to our AA Math Update presentation.
All right, good evening, everyone. Most of you in the room probably know both of us, but for those at home, my name is Greg Stone. I'm the Director of ELA Math and Elementary Education.
I'm John Wojcik. I'm the Instructional Math Coach for the district and also administration intern.
So we wanted to take a few minutes just to talk about math, where we are, where we were, where we are, and where we're gonna be going. We've got a lot of great work that's happened over the last year or two years with the new math series that was introduced, as well as a lot of work that happened this spring and summer and continuing into the fall, especially around the needs that COVID has brought tied to our particular program. So I want to start off by saying, you know, we're looking at with the end in mind. What is the end goal here? And so what we've kind of come up with is, it's really about all of our students here in North Syracuse having the foundational math skills for success in life. But I want to talk a little more about what that means. When we say foundational, we're not saying just the basics. We need to ensure that our students are ready for whatever happens after high school, entering the workforce, going on to college. So when we say foundational math skills, we're actually, we're setting a very high bar. It's not a low bar. This is making sure that they're ready for anything that's coming next. And we need to make sure we have a program that's aligned, that's rigorous, that's supportive, and that it's meeting the 21st century skills.
All right. As of last year, I know I shared a little bit about the Into Math Series and what it looks like with the Math Workshop model, just to remind you. So Math Workshop looks a little different this year. There's a lot of collaboration going on in the Math Workshop model. It would start with a number talk, which is all about problem-solving skills and getting a good number sense. That still can happen. Then it goes into a mini lesson. That still can happen, but the collaboration piece with students working with other students and small group instructions kind of in the back as of this year with, you know, social distancing. But the one nice thing is that the pieces that are still can be implemented are being implemented by the teachers with, you know, teachers are doing that small group instruction, but it's one-on-one now because they have small class sizes. And, you know, students are still doing the student reflection, which I think is really huge.
So coming back to kind of that end goal, you know, beginning with the end in mind, what is our math vision? So John just spoke about that Math Workshop model, and some pieces of that are kind of on pause this year in order to meet the needs... on pause this year in order to meet the needs of social distancing, but other components are very strong, and we've made a lot of adaptations this summer. But next up on that third bullet, they're talking about program fidelity with our math series. So as you remember, what was it, John, a year ago or two years ago, the adoption?
Last year.
Last year. So last year was the official adoption of the Intumath Series. And that's a K7 series. It's the first time in a while that our district has really realigned things, and it was a new series last year. So we learned a lot with the implementation. We had some pretty serious bumps along the road with ensuring that everyone had the training that they needed and for that to grow and for them to understand the why behind the program. Anytime you make a significant shift, it's always a big challenge. And so we've met that throughout that school year. And really, our focus right now is to ensure that we have a lot of consistency, and we're going to talk more about that later on in the presentation. I'll turn it over to John for common assessments.
So in a couple of slides, you're going to see that the math committee, which is representatives from every building at every grade level, did a lot of work this summer coming up with common assessments to provide that consistency and to also enable that, make sure everyone's learning at the same rate, and we can find learning gaps if we need them.
So for those of you that know me and certainly anyone who's watching, you always hear me talk about a guaranteed and viable curriculum. And that's ensuring a couple of things. We're ensuring, and as the quote up here says, you can see, that regardless of what teacher you have or what school you're going to, our students are going to have access to the same content, the same knowledge and skills. The curriculum is realistic, meaning it's doable for our teachers in the scope, and it's developmentally appropriate and challenging for all students. So this is ensuring that if you're in a school, if you're in an elementary school, for example, teacher A and teacher B, whether they're right next door or across the hall or down the hall, are teaching in a similar manner with the same expectations. When you're talking about vertically and going all the way up through K-12, it's the same thing. It's ensuring that our teachers all have an agreed-upon level of rigor. We're using those common assessments that John referred to, and we're ensuring that all of our students have access to the same level. And that's a major important thing. We're doing this in ELA and math, and it's really kind of at the heart of all the work that we're talking about tonight.
All right. So again, I'm giving kudos to our teachers. The next three slides are math committee, hard at work, and all through Zoom, which was amazing. So in the spring, when we got sent home, probably end of March, we got together and had vertical meetings, which means eighth grade met with seventh, seventh then met with sixth, sixth with fifth, and so on, all the way down to K. And what the meetings consisted of were, here are the standards and modules we taught in person, here are the standards and modules we still have to teach in our curriculum, and we're not going to be able to do that because we're virtual now. And kids aren't going to be on every day, all day, like they would be in a classroom. So we had conversations of what is essential out of the curriculum that's left. What is that essential to get that student ready for the next grade level? So if I was a fourth grade teacher talking with third grade, we looked at the third grade curriculum and what they had left to teach, and we really narrowed it down to what was that essential for those teachers to teach so kids coming into fourth grade were ready for fourth grade and weren't behind the eight ball more than they already were with getting sent home. We also talked about identifying a must-do's for the math series. Last year, when I introduced our math series, I think if you remember, I used it as, it's a giant buffet. There is so much in this math series. It's so many different pieces. Teachers cannot do every single piece. It's unfeasible. And we don't want our teachers doing every piece. We want teachers meeting our kids' needs. So we talked again, K8, what are those must-do's? So if I'm a fifth grade teacher, I'm not picking and choosing everything that I want. All fifth grade teachers are delivering this instruction, and then here's what I get to choose from based on my kid's needs. So we did that at every grade level, K through 8. So that's what the must-do's are. We also created common benchmark assessments, and we put those into Mastery Connect studying this year. Mastery Connect is an online platform that breaks your grade level, and it's all by standard-based, and it's three-tiered. So it's, if kids are meeting the needs, they become green. If they're near mastery, it becomes yellow. And if they're remediation, they're red on individual standards. So it allows teachers to have great instant data, to have great data talks, and to really be visual quick instead of having 50 stacks of tests on my thing and looking through each one going, "Oh, how many kids missed two? How many kids missed three?" Mastery Connect does that for us.
And I'd just like to add too that, and kudos to John and his team, they did a lot of great work this spring and summer and moving forward. But the other piece is that this is an evolving process. So there's going to be bumps along the way, especially anytime you do curriculum work, anytime you do assessments. For example, the Mastery Connect assessments, you know, they're pretty big and they're pretty intensive, and so we're getting some feedback from teachers. What we're going to be doing over the next couple of years is working with the teachers, hearing what parts of the assessments are working well, what parts are not giving enough data, or what parts can we pull out. And it's a process. You know, when you look at assessment work, you're really looking at a four-to-six-year cycle to get something that's really, really strong and giving you more exactly what you're looking for. We've kind of plowed through a lot of that and made some significant gains in the past year, but it is a process and it's going to continually evolve, just like the rest of the curriculum does. It's based on the students, it's based on teacher feedback, and tied to the core curriculum of the Intumath Series, but we're continually always making those adjustments.
All right. In the summer, after the dust finally settled from the spring, we talked about, as a math committee, a gap analysis. So we got together and we did this per building, per grade level, and each grade level into a three-column chart, put all the modules that they covered in school, all the modules they covered virtually, and all the modules they didn't cover. And then in the fall, I sent that out to all the buildings. So now, again, if I'm a third grade teacher, I can look back and see what my students covered virtually and what my students did not cover. So then I have an idea of where the gaps are going to be in my teaching this year. So if I'm doing data or money that might not have got covered virtually, I know that I have to front-load some of that information and back-fill some second-grade information before I can move on to my third grade. So that's what the gap analysis was. K7 really worked on aligning and finishing up the Curriculum Maps and Pacing Guide to the new math series. And we began and finished creating benchmark assessments, pre-assessments. So these are really cool. At the K4 level, we have a beginning-of-the-year test, a trimester-one test, a trimester-two test, and a trimester-three slash end-of-the-year test. And what we talked about is, so the beginning-of-the-year test for fourth grade is third grade's end-of-the-year test. A lot of the tests we get that come with series are based on standards that haven't even been taught yet. So there's some, if I'm a fourth grade teacher, if I give a beginning-of-the-year test, it's on fourth grade standards, it's on third grade standards, and that's not giving teachers a really good idea of what their kids are coming into, because if the kids are missing fourth grade standards, they're supposed to be. They're not taught that yet. So what we did is, we took those, tweaked them, took all the Intumath module tests, pulled questions from those tests on those essential standards. And now we have a test that is a fourth grade test that's at a third grade level on third grade essential standards. So if I'm a fourth grade teacher, I know exactly what essential standards my kids are coming in having mastered, having near mastery, or I need to remediate with them. And that's at the kindergarten, first, second, fourth, up to fifth grade. Sixth and seventh are going to be working on those assessments this year and into the summer. And then we also created a hybrid and remote learning pacing guide. So as soon as we learned what kind of model it was, again, the math committee, every grade level, we sat down and we talked about, what is this going to look like? Because we're going to get through half the curriculum. We're meeting, we're seeing our kids two days a week, so obviously, we're not going to be able to deliver the same amount of instruction. So they came up with hybrid and remote learning guides, and we set those out for three-month increments. So we have, we took what we had for Curriculum Map and Pacing Guide and just kind of broke it down for September through November. We're going to meet again in October to then do the next three months, and then to see, again, reevaluate what's working, what's not working, where are we? Are we, you know, we could be fully remote by then, or we, who knows what's going on? So we're going to do those in three-month increments and continually, that's a living document. That's going to evolve throughout the whole school year. And this fall, so we put those common assessments, pre-assessments in place using Mastery Connect with a big learning curve with Mastery Connect. We identified some individual student learning gaps with those common assessments. And we also have a virtual learning shared drive, which we started, actually, in March, we came up with that each grade level has its own, in a Google Drive, has its own folder and the modules. And so what teachers, it's like teachers pay teachers, but our teachers are doing the work. So if I'm a teacher and I create a video for a certain lesson, I put that into the shared learning drive if I would like to, and then other teachers can now use that. So we're sharing the workload because we know that delivering online virtual curriculum is really hard because some kids may not be able to do the synchronous learning at the time that they're allowed because their parents don't get home until seven o'clock at night. So all these teachers are kind of sharing the workload with the shared drive.
So looking forward, you know, what you've heard a lot from John already speak about is that collaborative culture, the importance of that. But you heard a lot about assessment tonight, and that's another area we're going to be talking about is, so we have all this data, what do we do with it? And why is it important? And that's going to be a major push in the near future as well. But coming up next, we're looking at, we've talked a little bit about fifth grade, but getting that sixth and seventh grade, all those assessments locked in like we've done in those lower grades. We also, this series goes all the way through eighth grade. So we adopted it kindergarten through seventh grade. We were going to pilot this, the eighth grade version in, oh, it was right around February-ish, and we know what happened there. So we're looking to get, somehow getting that eighth grade pilot in this school year. We're going to have to see how that works out. And then in the upper grades, what's coming up is really, we have to make sure we're aligned to the New York State Next Generation Standards. It used to be the New York State Common Core Standards. We now have the Next Generation Standards. It's basically taken what was there, changed some of the language and tweaked some of the language out there and some of the standards. We need to align to that. And there's like a four-year plan for that that New York State has rolled out. So we will meet all those deadlines by the state. Up first is going to be eighth grade this school year, and then it goes year to year after that. So we're going to be focusing on that. As John said, we're going to continue to work with essential standards, making sure we know what's absolutely critical. We're going to be working on those common assessments in the upper grades, and then the same as we've done in the lower grades, the pacing and mapping. And that changes a lot when you get to the high school level and you've got Regents courses. But we'll still be working with those teachers to ensure it's a similar process. And kind of coming just to the end, you know, in the beginning, I talked about one of those foundational skills, and I said I'd mention a little more at the end. You know, these are really those foundational skills in order to prepare our students for the future. And what's powerful about this series and this program is that it focuses on these seven core components, you know, being very creative, using critical thinking skills, collaboration, communication, information literacy, initiative, and then technology literacy. And this series does a lot of that, and the workshop model supports that. So as we move forward, we're going to keep these things in mind as we continue down the path, and this will be a K-12 vertical alignment where we'll continue those conversations with the grades above, grades below, and continue to start providing a cleaner, more guaranteed and viable curriculum. Do you have any questions or comments for us?
Let me go first?
All right. I had a few. Go first.
Amazing what John and you have done, Greg. Especially with the new program last year, they get three-fourths of the way through the program and then boom. I observed the class, a couple of classes last year. It's a very difficult math program, but it's what we need for the next generation of students and moving up and so forth. And I do like many of the things that you've done to, because you can't teach all the skills. Not if an elementary kid is in two days a week, then they don't come back for another five days. So I like that. My concern, we got a principal here, new executive principal soon, high school. I'm very concerned, and again, everything that we have done is because of health. You know, COVID is not good, and it's done some awful things in our country. But I have a concern that high school kids are only in once a week. They see their math teacher once every two weeks, and as I'm hearing now, the Regents will go on. That's what I'm hearing right now. I'm really concerned about, you know, the math at the high school, geometry being a very difficult subject, algebra. So it's something I'm going to be watching because, and it has nothing to do with, you know, what we're doing, but we've got to be very careful at the high school level. I'm really, really concerned. Basically, I'll be honest, it's great to get ready for college because that's what they're doing. That's what the kids are doing at the high school. I talked to them, and they're very basically independent and working with the teachers, but it's just very difficult. Math is so important, and it's something this district, how do I want to say it positively? Is something that we need to work on is math. And now that we only have once a week, or once every other week, it's difficult.
And Bob, I can say that having conversations with the math department, hearing what's going on a little bit with the high school, we do have department meetings that are still continuing regularly. I'm in contact with the department chairs. And I can say that, yes, although our model only provides that once a week, or once every two weeks of face-to-face time, those teachers are posting and putting forth a ton of the learning online as well, and that's their concern as well. The teachers will tell you, "We're really worried. We've got to keep moving forward and keep this content moving forward." So they're committed to it from everything I'm hearing up there, and I'll keep you posted as we go throughout the year.
Thank you, Greg. My other question again is staff development. You were doing lots of it last year. What's happening now? Is it mainly online?
So it's all online. What I find myself doing is making Screencastify videos and sending them out. As for the month of September, that's what I've been doing a lot of. So that way, teachers can then watch it at any time. I also post it to the Math Workshop website on our teacher sites so they have access because I know during the day, they're extremely busy, and then Wednesday, they're getting pulled in meetings. So I'm trying to be as flexible and as accommodating with that PD. So a lot of the times, it's been more one-on-one, or if I know it's a mass concern, I make a training video and I send it out to the Masters and then post it on the website.
I, you know, I've heard technology tonight, and I've heard math. I have a great concern, Mr. Rolls, with staff development in the school district during COVID. I feel, based on what I've seen, there's so much, and I will talk about in my comments tonight in the comment section, for teachers, teachers this, teachers that, there is so much on their plate. And with a new math program and new technology and CSO, I don't feel we're accurately doing the staff development in the school district that we need to do, and we need to look at other avenues. Just doing a video, and I'm not criticizing, doing a video or coming into a room and helping somebody, that's not staff development. And I think we need to have our staff development person come in and do a presentation for the board. So I have a big concern about staff development. Timing of it, because teachers don't have time during the day to do this. And I'll tell you, it's in my comment part, but I'll talk about time. There are teachers at Allen Road, 8:00, 8:30 at night, and they're there early because I walk in the morning and they're there early. This is not right. And so we need to look at our staff development, what we're doing to help these teachers, not just going in once a day or doing a video. We need to do more. So we need to have our staff developer come in and do a presentation for the board.
Other questions?
I did have, I did have one.
I'll let you go, and then you and I'll-
I do see a lot here where we're talking about pieces that we're covering, the pieces that need to be covered, and we've got things in place for things that weren't coverage gaps, all that. That's great to hear. There's going to be a good number of kids that fall even through those gaps. Do we have separate training, something to group them together to help maybe kids that are not even meeting those gaps and falling even further behind?
I'll take part of it. I can do, part of that would be, you know, given the RTI model that we have, so, meaning we have our AIS teachers that work with students of need that are falling through those gaps. So they're doing that in ELA and math. That's where we'd catch some of those. The program itself and what the teachers are working with, by identifying these ahead of time and hopefully catching that a lot sooner, we're not going to go start teaching a new concept without going back and going back to the students where they are and what they missed. So we're trying to fill those gaps as we move forward as opposed to moving forward- So we're trying to fill those gaps as we move forward, as opposed to moving forward and then filling them after the fact, after we learned that they might have lost something. So, you know, we do have those two components in there. It's certainly not perfect, and it's going to be a huge struggle. Do you want to add to that?
So built into the math series and before every module, which is like the unit, it's called an Are You Ready?, which is a pre-assessment. And what it does is it gives teachers, so when the kids take it, it's as if the kid misses this question, go back to, so if I'm a third grade teacher, go back to second grade, and here's the lesson and standard they missed. So there's that, that kind of allows teachers to look at their students before they go into a lesson, so they have the prerequisites there. And if the kids aren't meeting them, they know where they can go back into the series and help them. Another great piece is that Mastery Connect piece because the kids in red, it will help teachers identify those kids quicker and sooner because our common assessments are going to be, especially at the beginning of the year, is the standards from the grade below. So it allows teachers to identify those students' gaps and needs quicker and earlier. And workshop, when teachers, whether we're in a normal school year and they can pull small groups, but even in this year, a lot of teachers have said that, you know, with having, you know, 10 kids, 12 kids in a classroom, they're able to actually walk around and give two to three minutes of individual teaching. So again, there, they can find those gaps and fill those gaps. I know it's not perfect because of the COVID piece, but I think we have a bunch of pieces in place to help with that.
So mine are more just comments. Excited that math is getting the attention that it needs. So about that. You said a lot of great things. I love the uniform lesson plan between schools to make sure every kid is getting the same quality of education. Subject, love that. Love the resource that you have for math teachers to collaborate and to, you know, get quick hits of what's working for, you know, in other classrooms. That was great to hear. I also am worried about kids falling through the gaps. And I'm wondering, is the state relaxing any requirements because of COVID? And has that changed at all?
Not yet. Last I heard, it's, there's still a conversation going on, but we're moving forward with planning that they're going to hold us to the same expectations. If and when that changes, then we'll know, but not at this time.
I'm also glad that you're, you have a lot of ways to monitor the kids and find out quicker if, where they need help and, you know, specifically what their weaknesses are.
And I just wanted some clarification from my own head here. You talked a lot about a lot of stuff, a lot about assessments. And common assessments, I think I've heard them at least the last two years at BPTs that that was being worked on, mostly K-4. So I think I heard you say K-4, that's, is that locked in with the math that's done, the common assessments?
Yeah. So, yes, so we have at, for K, it's just a trimester three test because they do a ton of other assessments throughout the school year. So we just at K looked at what are the essential standards they need to leave K with? And we came up with a test for that. At first, second, third, and fourth, we have a begin the year common assessment, trimester one, trimester two, trimester three test.
That kind of speaks to my little bit of concern, and I'm, it's not really with you, it's with the whole institution, I think, not just us. I'm trying to get in my mind, you were talking about those four tests you just played out for the year, but the benchmark common assessments are a separate thing that you're putting in Mastery Connect, correct?
Yes.
So those are more frequent, and you were talking about that they were big, Greg, and they need to get smaller. But that's part of your progress monitoring, correct, throughout the year? So how frequently are those being administered? Or do you want to, will they be?
Yeah, so those are just once a trimester. So the beginning of the year test is obviously in the beginning. And then at the end of trimester one, we have a test to cover all the essential standard, or modules that were taught in that trimester. So we're only looking at what's been taught during that trimester to see, to make sure that, one, kids are getting what they need before we start continuing to plow forward, plow forward. I think part of the reason for these common assessments is, I know testing, we hate testing kids, and but it's for data for the teachers. And we talked about as a committee that, you know, it's good to know, like, we all say, yeah, we taught it, but wasn't really learned, you know? So this is just that, I think it's just more for the teacher's point of view.
You're talking about Mastery Connect again, the data for the teachers.
Oh, I'm thinking, I'm talking about the common assessments.
The commons, okay. That's where I'm getting.
So Mastery Connect's just a website that kind of organizes all our data. So.
But I'm sorry to interrupt you. But for Mastery Connect, you're giving brief assessments. Usually they're multiple choice in nature because you feed through. Picture with a camera, and you get the data back right away, correct?
So it's two-part. So that's part one, and part two is show your work, that the teachers physically have to grade, and then they just input that data into Mastery Connect.
Yep. So I think you're asking two different questions in there.
I think I have two.
So what John is saying is those benchmarks, those trimester one, two, and three, those are what's in Mastery Connect and what we're using Mastery for, Mastery Connect for. As far as more progress monitoring, we're not at that point yet. So that's more of what's just happening in the classroom, what they're seeing, what they're working on. The quizzes and everything else, that's not all in Mastery Connect at this point.
Where does the math inventory fit into all this?
Yeah, so, so, well, how much time do you have?
Not much.
Okay, fair enough. So I'll just be quick. So the math inventory is what we're using as our universal screening tool. That's going to determine where we are. So when students walk in the door, every student's going to get a math inventory. The unfortunate thing with that math inventory is it doesn't, it was never designed to be a progress monitoring tool. So we do not have a real progress monitoring tool. We're piloting two different progress monitoring, universal screeners right now. And I'll be talking to the board in a few months about those two in order to fill that gap that I think you're asking about.
No, thank you. I just tried to get that all.
Yeah, I know, there's a lot of terms that get thrown around, and they're used differently in each school district too, so it makes it a little tricky.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. More I've listened to about math my whole career in school, I think, so. Yeah. Got to be able to add your money, right? Count it. Hey, we are at Board of Ed Committee Reports. And again, I know you have a report for us today because you have a meeting.
Our policy committee, we met last Tuesday via a Zoom meeting. It was our pleasure to meet our new student rep, Melanie Duru. She's a senior at CNS. Look forward to her participation for the next year. And we do still need one more student rep on that. Two policies were reviewed and are on our board agenda for tonight's meeting. Three policies were due this month, but they're still out for legal review. Back soon. And our next meeting is October 13th.
Hey, thank you. And you still have the October 28th meeting, so you do not have a report on legislation, okay? And people are still, you asked for feedback from.
Getting a lot of feedback.
Okay, great. And superintendent's comments?
Thank you. So on Friday, we had our field hockey beat Liverpool 4-0. And it was good to see people out on the field. And our Section 3 boys golf team has won their third straight match. They took on FM and shot some great scores. Austin Alberici fired a 38, DJ Villeneuve, Brady Kennedy, Sean Lehrer, and Sam Thompson followed up with a 41. And I've received some emails from parents of marching bands because they've been out there and getting active. And the parents are really appreciative to the fact that they're able to practice and get back out on the field. So there's a lot of good things that are happening again, and students are very active.
Hey, thank you. Board of Education comments. And by the way, there was a nice news story on the golf team today because we have a football player who's opted for golf, I noticed. Before I look at Bob, I was just seeing if there were any other comments because I know he has comments. You referenced that you had comments. So I'll go ahead.
I have quite a few. I'm not, I care a lot about the school district and where we're going, and that's why I bring up things. And as I said, I would like Mr. Ludden to come and do a presentation on staff development. I also would like Mr. Rice to come. I'm concerned about science labs, that kind of thing, what's happening. Again, I would like that. Mr. President, you mentioned technology is a tool. And that is true. And unfortunately, we have to use it a lot now because of COVID. But it is only one way, one tool, as you know as a teacher, and I would say to Erin if she was here, that's used. And unfortunately, we're not using the two other tools because of COVID. And it has nothing to do with what a teacher is doing. But I know as a teacher and the things I used in my classroom, yes, technology was one thing I used. But there are a lot of other things, and these kids are not getting it. They're not getting these things. They can't. They have to be six feet apart, or how many feet in phys ed? And basically, what I'm saying is our kids are not getting the kind of education in New York State or any state that they should be getting. And I want that to be out there. It's wonderful that we come in here and do presentations, and these things are all wonderful. But there are kids out there that don't learn with technology. There's other tools, this other way that kids learn, and it's not happening. Who brought up, not last meeting, but a meeting before is, I know JD has comments. They have parent comments each board meeting. When is that going to begin here? Are we going to be able to meet in a bigger place? I know we can only have 50 people according to the governor. But we're really not getting, only through letters or emails from Connie that are sent to her, and I appreciate all the time that she spends, but we're not getting feedback. I'm not getting all the feedback that I need from the community on what's happening. And I would like to see that looked at. And then the last thing is, again, I mentioned it before, the dedication, and it's not just teachers, it's custodians. It's the bus drivers that wave to me every morning. This school district is an amazing school district. We have great leaders, and we have people that are working unbelievably hard, unbelievable hard. The stress level in this district has to be very high. It has to be very high. And God bless everybody that's working together, everybody that's administrator in this room, and the teachers, and like I said, the custodians are there. We've got double custodians now in the morning, and she's always out there at Allen Road doing whatever. And they're out there mowing the lawn at seven in the morning. But it has to be looked at and really thank all of our people, our staff, for what they're doing. This is not easy. And then my last thing deals, and I guess it's the wrong thing, is about legislative. The House of Representatives voted again on Thursday, I believe, to give money to schools, to give to states, to give to the post office, and it sits there. This is my political stuff now. It sits there. We have gotten nothing. We are spending thousands and thousands of dollars on technology and everything else. And we're giving meals to kids, and we're getting absolutely nothing from the federal government. Now, I know Dan shared with me, Mr. Kakko, a letter and so forth, and I believe he voted. I don't know how he voted, but he usually votes for this. And our two, our two senators would be voting on this if it ever got to the Senate floor. We are hurting the kids of America by not letting funding come. And I'm going to tell you, we're going to have to be in a bad spot here soon, in the next couple of months, if we don't start getting funding, if our funding is cut 20%. We're going to be in a very difficult position. And we've done, you know, we'll talk about a legislative committee, but it saddens me every day when I turn on the news that it doesn't get to the Senate. They're more worried about other things than the kids of America and the people of America. There's so many people out of work. There's so many people that don't have food. And as our new executive principal tells, we have this thing at the high school. We are feeding kids, these teachers and the kids in the government classes. And now it's going to expand to four schools in this district. And this shouldn't be happening in a country that has so much. So I, we will talk about this more legislative committee, but we can't sit here and let this go anymore. You know, it has to be stopped. And that's just my political comment. But I care for what's happening, and it's, you know, in my lifetime, this never happened. In my lifetime, which is a long time, I've seen a lot of things in this country. I've seen the death of a president when I was in school. I've seen assassination. I've seen a lot of stuff. But I haven't seen people turn away from American people and the polarization that's in this country. We should be helping everybody. Whatever our beliefs are, we should work together to make a better place. There I go. Sorry.
No, I'm speechless because I can't. Yeah, I mean, I follow that like you do, and I think in my email to Connie with regards to what to discuss in the 28th, and basically it was a topic. Is, and if you saw on the, I think it was a post standard yesterday, the nice article by the Combined Teachers of the Year from New York on that topic. And it's, I don't have any words to add that you didn't already crystallize so eloquently, so I'll stop there. Other than, I'd like to ask the board, since you brought up about, you know, we had the extension yesterday to November 3rd for remote meetings. I mean, here we are, meeting in person as a board, but it's closed. Do we want to look at doing something different? Does anybody have thoughts on that? And what I mean by that is what we discussed a couple of weeks ago, looking at opening it up and going to the junior high if necessary and figure out how to limit it to 50 people at that point. Any thoughts?
There could be a preregistration of some sort that's limited. People register events. If you register, I mean, we've got two weeks' notice most of the time. But if you want to address the board and possibly in a larger room, that they could register by a certain date. And if it reaches 50, then registration is cut off. Is that a way to do it?
It might be. Do we know if any others, I know some smaller districts are meeting with open means, but I don't know about districts our size. Yes, Mrs. Gibson?
On our first meeting in November, we are going to have to move to the junior high. That's not an if, and, or but, they're using this for voting. But what I did today was, is the gym can be an overflow room. We have 14 board members and administrators and myself all together. And we would also have to take into account our presenters. And then whatever, anything that's left after that would be 50 people. So say we just have the board and the administration, we would allow 36 then. Gymnasium has a smart board. And I went in there today, I signed into the smart board, went through, it worked, everything was there. We can use that as an overflow room for people who would like to come. And then when it's time for comments from the audience, that would happen. We would, we could make them preregister. We would also have to check their temperature and have them fill out the contract tracing form to do that. It is possible.
So you're talking about that would be possible when we're here in this building? That wouldn't be possible the day we're at the junior high?
At the junior high, we would have to really limit on where people are sitting and spreading people out, making sure they're six feet apart, taking rows, blocking rows off.
But when we're here, then we can record? We have that ability, and then we can stream that over?
Yes, because it's, we're streaming now. So I can go into the gym, sign in, get to the page, and livestream it to the whiteboard in there. And the sound works very well, too.
Want to make that a goal? Is trying to do that October 19th too aggressive of a?
I think we should try it for October 19th. I'm okay with it.
I mean, I would love to.
I think the one thing.
I know November 2nd puts us back. If we, we'd have to discuss, can we open it up and have people come into that? Because we don't have the ability to do what you just described when we're over there.
Right.
I would, I would like to do that if at all possible, but I just don't know, can we do all that?
Well, I think.
I mean, we can't, we're still struggling with these.
I think we can do that.
Proximity microphones here, so.
Right. I really think that we can do that. And the other thing I think is going to be is I like the idea of preregistering. If you haven't signed up by a certain date and time, you're going to have to put something in writing or maybe get on the list for the next meeting. I think that way we can ensure who's here. We can make it clear exactly what they have to do in order to. what they have to do in order to participate as far as contact tracing, having their temperature taken, that whole nine yards that we all follow, and that they will not be sitting in the room where the board is. They would have to be sitting across the hall into the gymnasium, so that they're aware of that. They would still come in, they could sit at the microphone, make their comments, and then even go back to the gym.
Are you aware of other districts doing, doing this?
I know that other districts are, have, I'm not sure the size that other districts are doing. So I know a lot of them are still doing Zoom, still doing the remote, where their boards are meeting, similar to what we're doing. So it's kind of all over the board right now.
Well, I'd like to move in that direction, any, for, for the, no, for the 19th, sorry. See, that math presentation's working already.
Yeah.
Does that sound like acceptable to everybody here? As a step in the right direction?
Okay.
I hope so. Thank you. So you got your work cut out right now, you-
And I'll sit with cabinet and discuss that with them, too, on the procedures that they think that we should follow, the cutoff times, that whole nine yards. Is that okay?
Yep. And thank you, Terry, for that thought, too, on preregistration. I like that.
One, one other thought. We have enough schools in the district that it, would it be wise with the limitations to find a parent representative to speak on behalf of the school? Would that be helpful?
We don't always have issues that are just from a parent. Some are, some are from different areas. I, I don't think that it falls into one parent that's coming for an issue. But if we find that we have a group of parents that are upset about an issue or want to speak about an issue, we can ask them to send a representative.
Makes sense, yeah.
Now, if we have five people with the same concern, maybe we, they can elect one to talk.
Person to come. Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll get working on that.
Thank you very much.
Do you have one other comment here?
Sure. Absolutely.
As far, we've been hearing reports across news channels that right now with COVID going on, a third of the nation is depressed or suffering from some sort of mental health issue, of course, that involves our teachers, parents, students. But I haven't heard counseling being available. And the normal route of counseling is walk down the hall and talk to your counselor, which you can't do. And now there has to be an extra step to reach out to a counselor if you know how to do that. Is there anything, an email being sent out, a link, something to address this issue with teachers, parents, and students?
Yes. Lisa Goldberg is addressing counseling issues with students and families and with staff. One of the things that we have gone the extra step because of contact tracing, we, I think Mr. Crowe mentioned, students are only coming in one day a week at the secondary level. So we used to be able to just pull them out of class and be able to see them. Well, with coming in that one day, we really don't want to always lose the instructional time. So we have given the ability that if I'm a student that comes in meeting on Monday for my in-person, I can come in on a Tuesday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, or Friday with, if the, if counselor wants to see me, that's a specific appointment, we can make that on an off day. And so we can also do the contact tracing if they are coming into the building. So we, we're trying to make sure they're getting their math, or their EOA, or their, their instructional piece, as well as me and the counseling needs, as well as some of the agencies that are also involved in the buildings, and they can do that as well.
Okay. So you're saying that Lisa Goldberg and, and staff are reaching out if they notice something. Does it work in reverse? Do parents and students and staff know where to turn? I'm sure staff does, but what about parents and students? If they have a counseling concern, do they know where to go?
Yes. They, they put some, some links and some resources for parents up on the page and in some very noticeable, noticeable spots right on the, the page and the links. But I will have Lisa get you the specifics, so that if you're out talking to someone, you can direct them. This is where you would go, or this is what you would advise for your child.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, routine action items. If I get a motion for consideration or approval, the minutes of the meeting of September 28th, 2020, motion from Mary, from Mark. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, that is carried. I'd like the motion to combine B, C, and D, the classification and placement of, of disabled students, school, preschool, and home instruction. If I get a motion for those together, motion from Terry, second from George. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, those are carried. A motion to put the report of the independent auditor in front of us, a motion from Terry, second from Mary. Do we get a little review on that? So I put that in front of us, and we have a little PowerPoint attached to that. Oh, yes, it's time for you, Mr. Lisanne, to come.
I have a very short presentation in front of me here, very similar to past years. So what I'm gonna do is just walk through. We had a board meeting, our audit committee meeting this past Friday through Zoom, went through everything in great detail for about an hour or so. So this is really just the highlights, you know, the big picture type stuff. So similar to past years, the audit went extremely well. Just hats off, you know, here everybody, you know, with, with the teachers and all, they're going through, too. Same thing is see on the finance side of the world. It's very challenging. Things came to a stop. The school districts were all struggling to get information put together. And unfortunately, there was no timeframe pushed out, you know, like IRS did with tax returns and stuff. So New York State didn't give you any leeway of having to file everything by this date, you know, or by October 15th. So hats off to Don's team, Anthony, and the entire crew did an excellent job putting everything together for us. We worked through Zoom meetings, video calls, everything we had to do, working together out here, social distancing. So extremely well, the audit went extremely well. Big picture of everything, we have standard communications, really no changes there in the past years. One big picture is the, the audit went so well, we got an unmodified, clean audit opinion, again, similar to past years. We have no compliance findings or issues to report for the federal grants audit. So that's an unmodified opinion of compliance. And we also have extra classroom activities fund, which we actually give a modified opinion on, which is similar to past years for cash receipts. But we did see some improvements in some of the controls and processes there, as you probably saw in this presentation. But overall, everything went extremely well. Everybody did very well preparing everything for us, providing information across all three of those audits. So we had a couple of controlled items and observations, recommendations, oversight and review. Some of these are very similar to past years, kind of rolled forward, and then government-wide financial statement accounting related to fixed assets and long-term debt. A lot of our schools struggle in this area, keeping track of certain information for capital assets. You know, Don and his team is working closely together on some of that stuff, but a lot of the, I'll say the shutdown things are just put on hold a little bit for these areas that are really not, in my big scheme of things, is not super critical, because the fund, financial statements are well, you know, taken care of throughout the course of the year, what you see. So I had no concerns or issues there. One of the things you see at the end here is the 4% limitation. You guys are at about 5.33% this past year, a little bit over the, the thresholds. We just report that as compliance finding. Almost all my schools I, I work with are well over, sometimes in double digits, some are about, as high as about 16%. You know, I, I can't say the state comptroller's not gonna say something, but the reality is, we've heard everything from the state education department is like, they're giving a free pass pretty much for schools for this 4%, you know, you know, knowing what everything's going on. And you guys, at 5.33% is not a significant concern to me. Last really slide is really the, the compliance audit for the single audit, you know, from guidance. This past year, we, we had to audit Title I for major compliance. What that is, we do a lot of compliance testing. So every year, we have to rotate different programs, like the child nutrition, Title I, or special aid. Your folks that oversee the grants do an excellent job. The grant requirements and compliance are getting more and more every year, things that we have to test for. So a good thing to report here, as I said before, unmodified, clean opinion. Anytime we have like a finding per se in compliance, compliance-type audit, is then you have to refund money back to the state of New York, to the feds. We never want to see that happen. So we work closely with like Don and Anthony, and Grant, anything they do that comes up that you need to be in front of you before, especially if you get some CARES Act monies and stuff like that, there's gonna be a lot of stringent rules. We don't want to see you guys, you know, fall, you know, come up short at the end of the year and have to refund $100,000 or something just because of a, a compliance mistake that was made. You guys have done excellent jobs, I said to Don and his team over the years, without having any compliance findings that result in dollars and cents. So, good job there. The last, the last thing was extra classroom activities. You know, we still see some, you know, areas for improvement in cash receipts and documentation. We see about 44% of the sample that we selected, you know, didn't have, you know, what we'll call, you know, adequate support for cash receipts. Doesn't mean that we didn't look at the cash receipts, making sure it came in the door, went to the bank statement. It's just some of the supporting documents, such as like a profit or loss statement, or, you know, more than just a piece of paper, so here's the number I got, you know, tying into what the, the fund was. So we did see some improvement there. You know, but with everything that happened this past year, pretty much come March, everything kind of shut down. So I know, you know, Amy's done a great job working with us, you know, that she's kind of full-time this past year, 100% into this. We've seen, you know, night and day difference in some of the, you know, reporting and, you know, the, the feedback and pushback. You guys have a lot of schools, a lot of money going around. It's a lot to keep everybody, you know, on target here. But excellent job with everybody here on extra classroom activities. You know, big scheme of thing, the audits went extremely well. Hats off to the management team here. Pretty much all we really had.
Hey, any specific questions on any piece of that?
I do. So it was our understanding that there were significant savings because of the school, the building shutdown, and that's had to go into the fund balance. Is that correct? Okay. So that's why there's such a big amount, or 4%?
Yeah. Plus, you were able to put some money into the TRS reserve and ERS reserves. You're actually to put some, capital reserves are restricted by voter, so you used some of that for your project. But you were able to put some more monies away into reserves that were established, that, you know, were actually created by the state. So that was very good management of the reserves there. And we talked about that with the audit and finance committee earlier this past week. So it was a great job you guys did there to get the number down to about the 5.3%. So.
Those reserves were new last year. Finally able to fund them. Also, I noticed they, there was recommendations to how you track capital assets, that there was accounts that could be created. Is that change gonna be at funds that?
So just real quickly, we spend so much of our time doing the fund accounting that, you know, that we do. But we're really required to prepare financial statements that meet generally accepted accounting principles, governmental standards. And so we're supposed to produce fund, uh, statements that show our fixed assets and our long-term debt. And so we've been working with our auditors. They've coached us through that process. And we think we're, we're at the point now where we can actually produce these external financial statements in the form that you're reading them here tonight. And, and that's, that's really not where us and most districts have been in many years. We've really stopped at the fund accounting. So we just have to take that next step.
Also, the supervisory review of bank reconciliations. What changes are we making?
So if you, one thing that was tough this past year, our, our treasurer was brand-new. He, he had been in the first year of his job. And also, because we closed down in March, we basically sent everybody home. So I think it made it for a particularly difficult year for the business office to have some of that supervision and review. And, and I think, very candidly, I think it brought to light some opportunities for us to improve our processes that we probably, had we had a normal year, we wouldn't have even noticed it. So I think it's a great opportunity for us to just kind of dot our i's and cross our t's. And thankfully, there were no negative findings. It's just opportunities to improve our control environment. And we'll be, we'll be doing that.
I want to point out, too, we were, from a professional standards, we're told basically by the government authorities to be on the lookout for stuff, to dig deeper in the stuff purposely. You know, so, you know, a lot of our schools saw similar stuff. I mean, a lot of our schools are smaller, meaning it's three or four people that run the whole school district. You guys, you gotta touch a lot of different people to get there. It's much more challenging. But we did actually do a deeper dive purposely because they said, oh, with the shutdown, you as auditors need to be aware that this could happen, this could happen, this could happen. So we did a little deeper dive in areas that we historically did not touch as detailed. So a little bit of this was just the nature of the beast of, you know, what was going on. But I think, you know, Don's team, a lot of the stuff is really close to being there, and we didn't find, you know, as Don said, material issues with the numbers. It all was done correctly. It was just some of the oversight people, you know, reviewing it, making sure, because you hate to have the auditor catch a problem at the end of the year, that's a big problem. You know, so you didn't have any of those type of issues, which is good. But we just want to make sure you, you know, strengthen oversight over, over the course of the year.
Any others? Hey, thank you. So we have a motion in front of us to accept the report of the independent auditor. Any other questions, discussion? All in favor? Pose, that is carried. Need a motion for B, amendments to the July 6, 2020 annual organizational meeting. Motion from Terry, second from George. And those are just changes in names due to administrative hirings. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, that is carried. Excuse me. A motion for C, acknowledgement of appointment of a partial hearing officer. Motion from Mr. Marizio, second from Mark. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, is carried. Terry, second from Mark. Any discussion?
I just want to say that, again, being a former teacher in this district, teacher aides are amazing, all the different duties that they do. And they deserve every little bit that we give them in that contract. They're amazing people.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, that is carried. Motion for E, adoption of the 21, 22 budget process timeline? Had to look at the date because 21, 22 is like, wow. Motion from Terry, second from George.
I, I just have a question. Is there any changes in it from last year that you have? Again, there's a lot there, and I, I don't know if there's-
No, you know, as usual, it's, it's four pages of, of steps that we go through. A lot of behind-the-scenes work leading up to the, the time when the governor puts out his budget. I think this is going to be a particularly difficult budget time. As a matter of fact, Dan has pulled us together. We've got a meeting this week to start to talk about just our laying out the process and really make sure we got our ducks in a row as we head into the planning process. So a lot of work ahead of us, but very, very similar process to prior years.
Thanks. Thank you. Other questions? All in favor? Pose, that is carried. Acknowledgement of gift, item F, a motion to put that before us. Motion from Terry, second from Mary. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, that is carried. I'd like to take the policies together, policies G and H, if you'd give me a motion. Motion from Thornt. Any discussion on those? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, that is carried. Personnel report, A, instructional personnel report, a motion place that before us. Motion from Mary, second from George. Any discussion there? None, all in favor? Pose, that is carried. Support staff, item, personnel, item B. Motion from Mary, seconded from Mark. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, that is carried. Administrative personnel report. Motion from Mr. Marizio, seconded from Ms., excuse me, Kruger. Any discussion? All in favor? Pose, that is carried. Congratulations. It's official.
She had to wait this whole time?
At this time, I'd like to make a motion, move into executive session for the purpose of reviewing the employment record of three individuals with no action to follow. If I get a second for that. Second from Mr. Marizio. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, that is carried. And a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion from Mr. Thornt, second from Ms. Scanlon. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, carried. The meeting is adjourned at 7:25. Policies to sign, I signed them already, so.
I was gonna say-
Yeah, I thought there was one when I looked at it originally, but I may be-